Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. Now called to order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by Local Access Programming. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? Being none, please rise and join us for the salute to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which is one nation, under the God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
This time, I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, each of the planning board members, to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. The first item on our agenda is an A and R for 17 Arlington Street. Is there anyone here representing?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Todd Broder from Fletcher-Tilden here on behalf of the applicant. So I'm sure you have the plan in front of you. This is a lot with a little bit of history. You'll see on the parcel existing is a 12-unit, it's an apartment building built in the 60s. And this is in the residential A district, and this use was again 1968, I believe it was. After that, Arlington Street in the subdivision surrounding this area was built out by the Maury family. Lots conveyed, houses built, et cetera. They retained this area along Arlington Street, along the frontage and additional frontage on Hampton Street. So today we're proposing to subdivide through the A and R process and create eight lots. One would house the multifamily building, and there would be seven additional lots. Two on Hampton Street and six on with frontage on Arlington Street, all meeting the dimensional requirements, 10,000 square foot lot, 100 foot of frontage. So that's what's in front of you.
Do you want the audience to have any questions? Anyone from the board have any questions? Glenn? Ron? Jason?
Nope.
You say multifamily town, you're talking about the existing apartment building?
Yes.
And I put in an additional multifamily?
No.
Okay. Sorry about that. Um, I don't have any other questions. I mean, they all have the proper frontage. Um, I have a, a motion to approve of the A and R plan as submitted. Move to approve as submitted. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jason? Myself, John, he's not a vote.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is applicant new singular wireless requesting site plan or approval under section, I'm sorry. The next applicant is 888 Southbridge Street LLC requesting a site plan review under section 3.2.5.14 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for modifications to an existing car wash facility located at 888 Southbridge Street. Map 65, parcel 16. Is there anyone here representing the car wash?
Good evening, the board members. My name is Ron and Jory. I'm one of the owners. And our engineer had an emergency and couldn't show up, so I'm here with a plan and with the description of the job.
Can you give us a quick rundown of what?
Sure. So attach, I'm going to read pretty much what the engineer wrote down, so you'll have the description of what exactly we're trying to do. So attach, you would support the document for the vacuum replacement and renovating the building and the existing car wash at 888 Southbridge Street. The owner of the car wash proposed to replace 12 vacuums units, old canister style, with 10 new energy efficient vacuum units. There was a total of 12 vacuums existing, six concrete islands which had two vacuums in each island. We renovate, remove from the existing parking. Please refer to the existing condition plan. You can look at the plans that you have with you. The owner is proposed to install 10 arches style vacuum, which is the existing paving parking showing on the attached site plan. The proposed site modification are update existing mechanical vacuum units with more energy efficient, modern units. There will be no change to the existing parking lot grade, improve in previous coverage drainage system or traffic pattern from the proposed improvement. An additional, the owner is planning to install an A-frame roof structure which had dormers on top and the existing building will be covered with brick siding system building exterior walls of the car wash. The building renovation with an A-frame roof structure. Building permit for this roof structure and siding improvement will be filed with the Auburn Building Department with the application with the building code and prior construction. So I can give you just an overview. This is something we've done many times. We own approximately 30 locations. Normally when we buy a location, we like to renovate them, make them extremely attractive and presented for the customers. And the old style vacuums is something that was probably done about 40 years ago. They're just the old canister vacuums, kind of not efficient. They have motors on them and they keep burning the motors, so we upgrade the whole system. As the engineer stated, traffic wise, nothing really changed. They're going exactly against where they used to be. So there is no structures that will be interrupting. The traffic flow is exactly the same. And regarding the building, we're just going to add an A-frame roof to the building to make it just more attractive and cleaner and nicer. So we, I think we're at 12, we're going to 10, so we're actually having less than what we had before, you know? And that's it. Nothing really changed on the structure. It's really just the vacuum system that we're taking the old system and putting a new system in.
Putting a new car wash system into, are you?
We actually are replacing all the equipment inside also, yes. We changing the equipment for the car wash equipment and we changing the equipment for the self-service base. Everything is just outdated, so we upgrading the whole, the whole site, pretty much.
Sorry.
No, I didn't. Have a motion to open a hearing.
I move to open a hearing.
We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, John?
Aye.
Aye.
So Jerry, is it a vote? It's now open. Does anyone from the audience have any questions? Anybody on the board have any questions? Glenn?
I just had a quick question for you, John. Does this qualify as a major modification or is this?
It's not a minor modification because they're redoing the whole structure on the outside. I mean, they're not changing the footprint.
Okay.
But they're adding, it's actually just a false roof, what it is to make it, you know, more appealing.
That's all I have. Uh, it seems to me though that you've started and done considerable fire without turning the site plan approved.
So there, I guess there was some confusion. We were here, I think it was a month ago in a meeting with the building inspector.
The building inspector made it.
And we started the job and we filed for permits because we've done it before and it was never in other towns any issues to replace a vacuum for a vacuum. It's, we own gas station too, and we change the gas pumps all the time and we never were required.
You didn't go about replace a vacuum for a vacuum. You wiped out the whole island. Every island you wiped out.
We replaced them with sonar tubes and we take the old one out, so that was an issue. So we came back to the building department and we talked to them, you know, and then obviously they asked us to file for a permit and obviously that's why we're here.
You are in a cease and desist order right now?
We are, yes.
Well, just that they started, appeared that they had started, now you see that the site plan.
They did.
Then a few, good few months back, I saw some digging on the right-hand side. Digging up some of those islands or whatever you were doing there.
So the vacuums were in the middle of the island, the middle of the parking lot. We just shift them so there is a better flow of traffic. So in the island, that's where the vacuums arches are going to sit. There will be sonar tubes, which if you drive by, you will see them. The sonar tubes is actually what the structure is. Before they were like 20 feet into the parking lot, now they close it to the sidewalk, so it's make it easier for the traffic flow. So we're just improving the traffic flow with the pay stations and everything else.
I can understand. It's just the idea that you started without.
And like I said, I apologize for that, you know, we should have came here first. We've done it before and we should have made a phone call, and that's my apologies, before. We made it so many times that we actually called the inspectors and said, we're going to replace the vacuums. And they said, go ahead and do it. So many times to, I'm taking all the blame. It is, I'm taking all the fault, I'm sorry, but we should have, we should have made a phone call. And if they said, no, you cannot do it, file for a permit, we would have done it. But like I said so many times, we've done it and the building inspector never had any issues with they're just replacing vacuum for vacuum, even though we did break the, you know, kind of jackhammer the old ones, but.
Remove the pavement. Jason, you have any questions?
At the end of the day, we're really trying to improve the site, you know, again, we apologize for, you know, not filing for the permit first. We're trying to beautify the corner, make it really nice for the town, for our customers and for, you know, the town of Auburn. I mean, once this project is done, you're going to be extremely proud to have a place like that in your town. And we are part of the community. Once we come into a community, we always donate the car washes to all the police department. We wash them for free. We wash all the school departments and all the other departments. We donate car washes to any fundraising. So we try to be part of the community. And the end of the day, we just kind of started in the wrong foot, I should say, and I apologize for that.
I got a few questions. Um, on your first sheet, it says install sock bales, siltation barrier prior to construction at limit of work. You have the wattles out, but there's no silt fence behind it. First thing I noticed.
This, we already installed all the silk, the sock.
Yeah, but you install a siltation barrier behind it. It says, silt sack, it says, install sock bales and siltation barrier, which means the sock bale, which is your wattle. And you put a silt fence behind it that's staked into the ground six inches deep. That's what it says. There's no detail on the plans for me to look at, which is a faux pas on your engineer. There should have been a detail for that on the plans for your erosion control. Secondly, you don't have a billing permit yet, correct?
We do not have that.
Okay. Um, you don't have a land disturbance permit either, right?
We do not have that.
Okay. You've been to Concom, you've been to Concom to get approval because there's wetlands all around you.
So actually, last time we went to the meeting, the lady from Concom had no issues with everything we do because there is less than X amount of square footage and we're not exceeding that. So she was okay with that.
I haven't heard that. You have an update from them?
She was in the meeting with the builder inspector, the middle commissioner.
You're going to be replacing some of the paving?
Yes.
No paving detail. There's no concrete pad detail for the, where you go through for the automated payment and where you stick the card in and for the pass. There's no concrete detail for the post holding the vacuum hoses. I don't even know what's concrete. There's no rebar detail. None of that's done. Um, is the, are the dumpsters going to be fenced in?
I think the dumpster is already fenced in. As of right now, the dumpster is fenced in. It's not moving. It's staying exactly where it is.
And you're not adding any more curbing, right? Everything else is.
No, everything's staying the same.
So basically what I'm saying is where you're going to have your stand where people are going to pay either by credit card or by pass, assume there's going to be a concrete pad there because.
That's correct.
If you pave it, every car stops to push the asphalt after a while, get home. No detail on the plans for that concrete.
It's.
No detail on the plans for any concrete. Not, you have, I have to have a detail.
It's a four, it's a six inch concrete pad underneath the car.
Doesn't matter. You still need it. It's part of the site plan. You need to show the reinforcement on the concrete wherever you pour concrete.
If I keep it asphalt, would that be better for you? I'll just keep it asphalt. I won't do it.
Well, I mean, you're better off with a concrete pad for yourself.
But I just don't want to come back here.
Going to have to because it's not, I'll put it up for a vote, but I don't think anybody's going to pass it tonight.
If, all I'm saying is that if it's, if it will pass as asphalt, I'll just keep it as asphalt.
That requires.
I don't, I don't have to do it with concrete if that's.
You don't have to do, you don't have to do concrete or asphalt. That's your personal choice, but we have to see it on the plans that that's what's going to be done. So when the building inspector goes out there or someone from the DBW goes out there to inspect, they know what they're looking at and what they're looking for. Anybody can pour a six inch slab. You need reinforcement. You have cars going over it. It's not a sidewalk. Vehicles are going over it. So that, you need a detail for that. Need a detail for the silt fence. I haven't heard anything from Concom, so we have to get confirmation from Concom. Paving detail, concrete pad detail, detail for the post holding the vacuum hoses. There's no detail there. It just shows a slab with the thing mounted on top. I don't know how it's attached. I don't know if it's strong enough. I got no idea. That has to be reworked by your engineer and resubmitted, in my opinion. Up to the board to make the decision.
I, I can answer all those questions. We can provide all those details to the building inspector with no problem. We're doing it all the time. So we have all those details, you know, so.
My question is why aren't they on the plans?
I don't know why they, you put them on the plan, you.
I mean, it's very simple. I mean, details are cut and paste. Everybody cuts and pastes their details. And the devil's in the details. I'm just saying, I need to see it myself and I will put it up for a vote for the board. I didn't want to condition it, but.
I, again, you know, this is something that if you get approved by the board, we can definitely provide you with. It's very small details that we can provide the building inspector and we will not.
It's the same, it's the same thing as you started. You started before permit. You started before going to the Concom. You're going to cease and desist. This is, I'll turn them in. I'll never see them. I know, I know, we're welcome. I know how this works.
You, you can.
I've been in this business way too long, way too long.
You can put conditions that we will not get the building permit unless we provide those stuff. So it's not that we're giving us, we don't have a building permit to continue. If you approve the plan.
I understand you don't.
We can provide the building inspector with the details.
I understand you don't have a billing permit yet, but until you get a site plan approval, which you don't have, then I don't know if you can get a billing permit. Be honest with you. I don't have an approval from the Concom Commission because you have wetlands behind you. They haven't seen the detail of the silk sock and the silt fence. That has to be brought forward and shown how it's going to be done. All those details have to be done. And especially the details for the concrete posts holding the vacuums and the concrete details for the big sign you're putting up where you, in your stands for the card reader and the pass reader. You have to have all that in the site plan. It's not in here. There's nothing I can do about it. Talk to your engineer. It's not, that's not up to me. That's up to your engineer. So may I motion to approve as submitted? John? Glenn?
I, I think my suggestion should be that you can, we continue this. You, you said, you mentioned you have all the details.
Yeah, we do.
Just have your engineer update the drawings, continue to the next meeting, and you should be able to breeze through this if you have all of them. All right?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion to continue.
Uh, to, uh, sorry, I'm not the chair. Chair, I move that we continue this hearing.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, John? Glenn? Ron? To continue.
Aye.
Let's talk, Jerry, is a vote. Next on the agenda is applicant new singular wireless requesting site plan approval under section 9.3.11 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a wireless telecommunications facility at 174 Leicester Street, map 39, parcel 30. Is there anyone here representing the tower?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Edward Pare, P-A-R-E, an attorney of Brown Rudnick. Good evening to you and members of the planning board.
Yep. Um, before you even start, does anybody in the audience have any questions? Does anybody on the planning board have any questions? Questions?
Uh, then John, just one, I think we asked you about the fall zone of the tower.
Yep.
Last time and you said it was one of the greatest inception's, some.
Correct. So the, the tower is designed to fall over onto itself, not fall at the base onto the other property. And we did demonstrate that to the zoning board. They did give us approval for a variance from that fall zone. I know in the Graves report, when they looked at the peer review, I don't think they were aware that we had already been to the zoning board and received variances for all of those issues, including the fall zone, the height, et cetera. So we're all set on the fall zone. We have the relief and the tower will bend over onto itself. That's the way it'll be designed.
Um, first of all, on the drawing index, they didn't put in sheet Z3A. It is in the plans. It's your drainage, drainage plan. I kind of thought was. And going with that. The, on the grading plan on sheet Z3A, it shows everything from the entrance draining into the site and to the proposed retaining wall. But I don't see any catch basin to catch the water or place for it to go. And not only that, there's a subdrain behind the wall all the way around. It doesn't show where it daylights because you're not allowed to add more water to the surrounding properties and it's already coming off in an actual rainstorm now.
Yeah, so two things. First, we, we do need to obtain our, uh, the, uh, hang on one second. Delay disturbance permits. We're working on that to, uh, to make that application. So we expect we'll have a condition that we'll have to obtain that. But Derek Creaser is here. He's our engineer on this site, so I think the question probably better directed directly to him.
Derek Creaser, Centerline Communications. I'm an engineer in Massachusetts. The engineer of record for basically the overall design to make sure all of the other engineers do their due diligence. In this particular case, we're still kind of in zoning at this point. I do have a consultant who's an expert in stormwater design and environmental protection. He has visited the site. We are in process of that full design as we speak. I'd expect that to be done in about six weeks.
So I read all the stuff from Graves and they addressed it and you're addressing, everything was, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're working on it. It's not on the updated plan. I can't see it. We, I have to go by what I see on the site plan. And that's not my only question where the drainage goes, but, um, when you get into the structure of the mass, the one, it doesn't give me a fold over, I don't believe it shows me a fold over zone for that mass where it will, um, fold over on itself and at what height. To make sure it doesn't go beyond the top line. The property that you're going to be using is 75 feet by 75 feet, correct?
Correct. That would be the fenced area.
Other than the driveway, I'm talking about the actual plot of where you're going to have the tower and the generator, all those fans. So when I look at the details. And your pads is just a hock style of one foot down and then the middle's hollow with stone.
At this point. Details. Uh, sorry, it's really hard for me to hear because of the air conditioning. Uh, you're asking.
The pad details.
Correct.
The hock style, hocks all the way around all four sides, hollow in the middle with stone, six inches thick. I think that's what it says.
Uh, that would be for the equipment. Uh, are you more concerned about the tower foundation itself?
Yeah, the equipment pad, exactly. So.
Z10, Zulu 10.
Yeah, one, yeah, Z10. It shows me how far from where it's thinned out to the chamfer. That's eight inches. It tells me two inches below the top. I believe that's going to be the rebar mat or the mesh. But I don't see a thickness on the slab. See three quarter inch chamfer, top finish grade slope away from concrete, but I don't see a thickness of the slab. And then when you get down to the gravel drive, I see it's 12 feet wide, 3% slope, which is fine. But I don't see how thick the, uh, the gravel is going to be for the gravel servicing. Oh, six inches. I don't know if six inches is enough. I found it. And then, um, Yeah, on S1.1, I see they've really reinforced the retaining wall, uh, rebar detail. Now, my question on that is, I see what the lap joints are supposed to be, so on the, um, the L bars or R bars, you refer them to, um, I don't know what the lap is up onto the number eight. I believe that's a number eight for the L bar. It goes into the footing and it comes up. I'm assuming by the key, it's 72 inches. Am I correct?
There is a table here that I have to add a few things together.
Yeah, there's a table on the right. So it's a number eight splice, top bar is 94 inches, other bar is 72. I would consider that another bar, so I'm asking if it's a 72 inch splice. It shows the lap, but it didn't give me a distance. They're all number eight, so.
Excuse me, sir. May I approach so that I can see what you're looking at?
Sure. You have your L bar here tying into your footing.
Mm-hmm.
It comes up and you have a lap splice with a vertical piece that goes all the way. That's not a top bar. So I'm guessing that this is 72 inches. That was my question because number eight, it's supposed to be 72 inch splice.
I can confirm that. So I actually have the structural calculations worked, were performed here.
All right.
So it may actually be, this dimension may actually be missing, but the math was done and just maybe never transferred onto the plans.
All you have to do is say, yeah, the lap splice is 72 inches. All you got to tell.
I could, but I don't want to, I don't want to just throw a number out there.
Okay. And then, um, the unmasked itself, which I said, um, find it again.
So the tower itself?
Yeah, the tower itself.
That would probably be more like the elevation pages. I don't know that we have the actual structural analysis of the tower done yet.
Yeah, I just wondering where the.
All three of us know.
I know this means you can't show the whole thing to scale, but I was wondering where in this 140 foot that it's either fear pins or breakaway.
I'm going to go to the microphone so it's off record.
Okay.
So you guys talk about a pinch point or a collapse point of the tower and that's kind of a, um, a very generalization in structural analysis. They don't actually design the tower to fail and fold. What they design is. tower to fail and fold. What they design is halfway up the tower, they way overdesign the base of the tower so that it's much, much stronger. So that if it does see a wind that is maybe greater than code, the top part of the structure will be designed to current code. And at that point where the top part of the structure halfway up and the bottom part, which is way reinforced, it would expect that the bending would happen after the reinforced point at about halfway.
Get this straight. The top of the towers...
Designed to current code. And then the bottom half of the tower is designed above code.
Right. So it's stronger. So you have a weak point with the two joint.
You could say a weak point or it's just designed...
Yeah.
So you wouldn't expect the bottom to fail. You're going to expect the point at which it goes down in code to fail.
And I think we need some reassurance that that's not going to land on outside the 75 foot area because it's 140 feet tall. So divided in half, 70 feet, that will land within the 75 feet. But we need assurances that that's how it's going to be designed.
Can I offer that they'll have a structural...
Okay. So as part of the zoning board process, we did supply that to the zoning board. It should be in the zoning board packet, but that's exactly how it was designed. So if it were to fail, it would be within the 75 feet. And the zoning board approved the variance for the fall zone.
You just told me it wasn't designed yet.
What's that?
You just told me it wasn't fully designed yet.
Sorry, I haven't seen the design yet.
Were you the engineer of record?
You have it. You have it. The zoning board has all of the designs. We supplied those to the zoning board and to your office after the last hearing.
How come the engineer of record hasn't seen it yet? He's the one who's stamped on these plans.
I'm not the person who buys the tower. AT&amp;T buys the tower. They're very, very expensive. They purchase them from large steel companies. They do the design work on that.
No, I understand that. But I mean, you being the engineer of record, you should see the calculations before it's brought before a board.
I agree.
Correct? So, and all the questions or remarks by Graves have only been addressed as, "We are working on them and we'll put them in the updated plan." Every one of them. There's not one that's complete. So...
Well, all of the Graves initial report, we did reply to all of those. The exceptions are the erosion and the land disturbance permit. We do need to go get, but that's an expensive undertaking. You can certainly make it a condition of approval that we will obtain it. When we met with the technical review committee, they advised us we needed it and we will obtain it.
The only one...
The others are all zoning issues. There were four that were zoning issues that were taken care of with the zoning approvals.
I marked on my stuff what was zoning board and what was outside. So zoning by law, that's zoning. Three zoning, four zoning, five zoning, six hasn't been submitted.
Then a bunch of land disturbance.
Design engineers on that a land disturbance permit, stormwater calculates, the plan, the sediment and erosion control design are currently in progress utilizing Pear Corporation of Holyoke. That plans and calculations will be submitted to the board once complete. GRI offers no additional comments at this time. Well, they haven't been submitted to the board.
They haven't been submitted for the land disturbance permit yet, but you can certainly make a condition that we obtain it and we will. The last one was the, you would ask the question about the tower and the structural...
Moving forward with the planning board, the site plan has to be complete. It says you're working on the erosion control. We need to see the erosion control you're going to put in. It also has to go before the concom, if I'm not mistaken.
Does not.
He's going to check that.
Concom did not require it. We went through technical review.
I can put that as a condition, but that means you can go out there and start and not have any erosion control. We need to see the erosion.
Well, we can't because we're required to get a land disturbance permit, which will include the erosion control.
Yeah, but I bet you're required to get a land disturbance permit after you get a planning board approval.
What's that?
I bet you usually get your land disturbance permit after you get a planning board approval.
Well, except that it's very expensive. There's a lot of testing that we have to do. It's going to be very expensive to get the...
It's not my problem. My problem is what's before me. And what I see before me is incomplete. And you go to eight, design engineer responded that land disturbance permit, stormwater calculate, blah, 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 same thing is the answer to number seven.
Right. And the building...
Number six.
And we'll submit that. The building official will review it and determine whether it complies.
The way this works is we send it out for peer review. You make your corrections.
Which we did.
Back before peer review. Peer review notifies us whether you've met the criteria. Then it comes back before us for approval. We don't have that.
Well, you have everything except for the land disturbance permit.
Everything except.
Well, there's only one except. It's the land disturbance permit.
No.
It deals with all of the issues that Graves raised.
It's not just the land disturbance permit. You have no erosion control design. You have no water control design. You haven't answered my questions on where the drainage goes because you're still working on it. That's all part of the planning board's site plan review. We don't have that. We need to see that. Graves needs to see that, that all this is being done. Then they send a letter to the planning board. Then we read the updated plans. We look at their answers and then we vote yea or nay. That's how it works. I'm not taking a shortcut.
Graves didn't ask for anything other... Our responses seem to satisfy Graves. I don't...
Because we haven't resubmitted yet.
We... Well, we did. They did a report. We submitted our response.
Have you resubmitted the plan to them with all the corrections that they're asking for? Like the erosion control? My questions tonight, where does the drainage go? Where does the subdrain go?
The drainage is going to stay on the lot. There's a note on the plans to that effect, which we've indicated.
You're missing the point. Everything drains into the lot with the tower and the generator and everything else. Where does it go from there? It's got to go somewhere.
Do you have plans saying it's staying on the lot? It'll stay on the lot?
No, that's a BS answer and you know it.
Well, there's a note on the plans. It's stamped by an engineer.
Control the water. So if it happens to build up over there, we get 100 year storm that goes over the wall, washes out the neighbor's yard, then what?
Well, we have a problem. We have a problem.
No, we have a problem because we said yes. That's our problem.
But you can rely on the fact that we said it's staying on the lot. It's stamped by the engineer. There's a note on the plans.
I think you've said, and I feel the same way. So let's do either continue or deny.
I think we should continue this. I'll put that up for a vote. I'll even put up for a vote as submitted with conditions. I'll be willing to do that. But if they say no, then we're going to move forward and continue until all the criteria that Graves pointed out, that you said you were working on, are in, approved by Graves and seen by us. That's the way it works. May I have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion for approval with conditions.
May I have a second? No second. May I have a motion to continue to our next hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Myself, John, and I as a vote. We continue.
I think we're going to need beyond the next hearing if that's what you suggest. I think we're going to need something beyond the next hearing. We'll never get the stormwater, we'll never get the land disturbance permit approved and back before you by the time that happens.
When did this whole thing, when you first came before the board, was it April?
We were in zoning prior to that. We've already been through zoning.
Okay.
So even longer.
April, May, June. It's now July. So if you want to extend to the second meeting after this, that's fine. We can extend to the next meeting. And if you're not ready, we'll extend to the next meeting.
I'd suggest we go to the second meeting.
Want to go to the second meeting?
Please.
Although may have a motion to approve, to this be continued to our, not our next meeting, but the following.
Thank you.
May I have a second?
Second.
Favor, John, Glenn?
Aye.
Ron, Jason, myself, John, and I as a vote. We'll see you in the next second meeting from now.
Second meeting, September meeting.
Yep, September.
What? Do you have a date?
Oh, we have one. August 12.
No, next meeting is August 12th, the month after September 9.
September 9, yep.
What was it? September 9. September 9. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Arbor Recycling requesting site plan approval under section 9.4.1 of the Arbor zoning bylaw. A warehouse at 4749 Rockland Road, Auburn, Mass. Map 17, parcels 177 to 224. Good evening again, Todd.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Todd Broder here from Fletcher Tilton on behalf of the applicant, Arbor Recycling. It's been a few meetings, I believe, since we were back in front of you. We've been trying to work through land disturbance permit related issues as it might impact what's on your site plan. So we've gone, there's a little bit of back and forth that needs to happen in that case, which we've done. We've got a very recent email from the assistant town engineer discussing our most recent submittal of plans. I don't think they got to you before the Thursday deadline, before today.
We got them yesterday.
Yeah. I figured it was, you know, the 4th of July holiday and everybody escaped from my office and probably from town hall as well, I hope. But really, what I think we wanted to convey is the items that we talked most about at the last hearing, including maybe the highlight being the road construction and the depth of the driveway, I'll call it. So we've updated the plans and you'll see those once you see them. And Michael does have a full size set of plans if you care to look at them. But updated that to five inches of pavement, two and a half of base, and two and a half of the, two and a half of binder, two and a half of the top coat. So we did that by a way of excavating down because of, we didn't want to create an arbitrary elevation there. And it triggers a bunch of things with drainage. And I'm not the engineer, but I'm obviously bumbling my way through the engineering terms for you. So we've upgraded the driveway to the five inches as requested. We also put on the plan a series of arbor viti on the southern side of the drive where there's the closest residential neighbor. So it runs all the way, well past that property, actually, well past that point. In addition, you know, to that, I believe there was going to be a request to fire department or at least a reach out maybe to see if they had any additional comments. I didn't see anything. I'm not sure anything else came up. They were part of DCG initially when this came through. We didn't have any particular comments from them. So if something is there, we're happy to try to address it. But there wasn't anything outstanding from fire department for us to address at this point. I think really those were, those were the big highlights. We do feel like we're at a point with the land disturbance permit that we don't think there will be substantive material changes based on the latest plans that we submitted. So at some point, when you're ready, we think we'd be ready to close out this process and then move on and finalize any further details with land disturbance. But we're in good shape with them. Conservation Commission meets tomorrow night. They will need to be updated on these changes. It's a change to the scope of work a little bit anyway. It's within the same work area, but just the methodology and what we're doing is slightly different. So, you know, we'll await any further comments that they might have, but we would, we think we're pretty close to being done, essentially. Sure. Michael.
Hi, good evening. Mike Marinus, engineer. Just the one open item. You had indicated last meeting that you wanted to see asphalt curb along the side and we...
I read what she wrote. I have to call her.
Okay, yeah. So you saw her comment that she...
Yeah.
Okay. So my suggestion would be maybe just to provide breaks in the curb and then there would be a place for water to flow and still maintain curb. That was my only suggestion. The other thing I wanted to point out is that we provided vegetated swales along both sides of the road to treat runoff. And her office was looking at that as an open item as well.
Okay. So just before we get into any of this, Todd, you realize we haven't had time to look at these plans?
Yes.
I got these plans when I showed up tonight. So I don't know where we're going to go. But I'm going to ask if anybody in the audience have any questions? No one in the audience has any questions. Please go up to the microphone and state your name and address.
Brian Capuano, 2 Rice Road, Auburn, Mass. I'm in a butter. We spoke at the last meeting and we spoke about widening the driveway so that two vehicles can pass side by side, which required a 22 foot wide driveway with berms on each side. I didn't hear any of that tonight. I heard about the pavement, but I haven't heard anything about the width of the driveway. So that to me is a safety factor. When you have, when you have manufacturing facilities with big trucks going in and out of there, you have to have capabilities to handle those trucks. And these trucks, there's probably, I forget the number, 70 trucks a week, maybe? I don't really know the number.
I think in the last meeting, we had made a suggestion to them and they said they would put a red light, green light at the end of, each end of the driveway. So only one truck comes up and goes in at a time. Now, it's up to the fire department to tell them they got to widen it, not me. So you got a problem with the width of the road and it's 20 feet instead of 22 feet. The town engineer, the assistant town engineer said she didn't want to curb on it. I don't understand that. I have to talk to her. I just got that notice today. So I have a lot of discussions to do with people in town to figure out what's going on here. I understand their premise. I know they've upgraded the thickness of the road. So I don't know what to tell you. Are you a landa butter?
I can't really hear you.
Are you a landa butter?
Yes, I am.
Oh, whereabouts?
I'm on the Brookside, on the other side of the Brook.
Where's Rice Road?
Oh, Rice Road is in, up by Bancroft Street.
So you own land there?
Yes, I do.
But you don't live there?
I do.
Okay. So I wanted to know.
So you're going to postpone this again? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, we have to wait till...
Well...
If you have an issue...
I haven't heard anything yet. I haven't heard anything yet about the flooding down by the front of the driveway. That's where all the flooding comes from, at the culvert. Because the culvert backs up. In 1954, that culvert was made.
Okay, who made the culvert? Who made the culvert?
I'm thinking it's in the state of Massachusetts.
Okay. Is the culvert right next to the edge of the road?
Yes, it goes right under the...
Talk to the town. That's town property. That's in town right away.
No, I'm not saying that. All I'm saying is, is the culvert was done in 1954. And that was designed and engineered at that time by the flow of water coming off of the Stoneville reservoir. So that culvert was made for that water flow.
And what I'm trying to tell you is that if that is in the town right of way, it's not the planning board's purview to tell the town what to do. You have to go to the town DPW and tell them that the culvert is undersized during a heavy rain. They take care of it, not the planning board.
I understand that.
Then we're done.
What I was trying to say was, the water is still going to run over that driveway. That's what I'm going to say because nothing's been done to prevent that.
What I'm trying to tell you is if you approach the DPW to enlarge the culvert, to improve the drainage, that may not happen. That's why I told you to go to the DPW. But you're not listening. That's the third time I've said it.
If you're going to work on the driveway and make a driveway so that it's, can accommodate trucks, then you would, you would address the concern of the flooding down there also.
They're allowed to pay from the edge of the road into their site when everything's approved. The town drainage culvert is the town's. It's not their responsibility to improve the town drainage unless the town directs them to do that as part of their permit.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, Jody Polkis, 41 Rockland Road, I'm in a butter. So residents on the street have been very...
I can't hear you. Move the mic down to you.
Sorry. So residents on the street, we've been very concerned from day one on this whole thing because it's, you know, I know he said 70 trucks a week. It's more than that. We're talking 30 plus trucks a day between 18 wheelers, big oversized box trucks. And a week ago, there was an accident where they, one of them apparently did a three-point turn in the middle of Rockland Road and took out a telephone pole. You know, it's a very busy walking road. A lot of kids ride their bikes. A lot of kids ride their bikes. You know, this has been, these trucks have been a safety issue for us on the road and, and it's just, it's very frustrating, first of all. And secondly, no one seems to care. Like, this, this business has been running for like a year and a half. I mean, this, this gentleman bought this property. I know he paid a lot of money for it and I guess he got the okay from the building inspector. Like, what did the building inspector know about what was gonna happen there? Did he know there was gonna be 30 18-wheelers coming, coming down the road every day and on a thickly settled residential road, number one? Number two, how did they run a business without having all these permits? Plus they're in a conservation and a flood zone. You know, I mean, they, they've disturbed land. I mean, I'm two houses over and is, you know, butts the road right there. I mean, we don't know what they're doing. I mean, the, the water comes over that brook, it fills our backyards. And I understand that the last meeting you said they can't make more water come and I get that, but I don't understand how a business can be running when there's no permits, when they need conservation, when they need pla-. And what about all these ro- all these huge, heavy trucks? I don't know what are 18-wheeler ways, but they're bringing in, you know, bags and bags-
Let me stop, let me stop here right there. So they're here to improve the roadway in their site. If they have a, a permit from the town to run the business, talk to the Select Board, talk to somebody else. That's not the planning board purview. If they have a permit to operate their business, they can operate their business. They're here trying to improve the road. Unfortunately, they can't raise the road because it's in a flood plain. If they could raise the road, your flooding would stop. But that's not allowed by state law. You can't fill in a flood plain. So the water's still gonna come over the road at some point, I'm sure, and it's still gonna flood somebody's yard as it always has.
I'm into flood zone.
So-
It's gonna flood, but-
You're in a flood zone. So before these people bought the property and started their business, what was it right before that?
It had been, it actually had been empty for a while. I don't know what's-
What was the last business in there? I'm not, I'm not-
Tire. I think it was a tire warehouse and they didn't bring in, like, they didn't come in with tractor trailers. They just came in with like, just like those big utility trucks full of tires. And it was just, it was basically just a warehouse. Now we have basically a manufacturing there crushing bottles and cans and anything to do with the ma- uh, the mass, uh, bill, you know, recycle bill. But the other, my other question too is, these heavy trucks, not an engineer, but all these heavy trucks, I mean, granted, trailer trucks come up and down the road occasionally, but not on a steady basis like they are now. What about all the underground utilities, our water lines, our sewer lines? I mean, are these roads, can they stand this? I mean, my house shakes sometimes.
Talk to the DPW. If that road isn't up to town standards, the state standards, they handle a trailer truck day after day after day, then the town needs to redo it. That's not the planning board purview. We're from where they enter the property in the site plan. That's all we have any, not control, but any opinion on. So as far as a truck coming out, doing a three-point turn and hitting a pole, that's not the planning board. And I think you were here the last time and said that truck speed over the hill, coming down Rockland Road. I told you to go to the police department, ask them to put up a radar truck. Have you done that? No? Well, what do you want me to do?
Well, I'm just, I don't-
I'm here, I'm here telling you what you need to do to try to help you, to make your life better, but then you don't do it. So then you come here and complain again because the traffic's too much, there's trailer trucks. What do you want me to do?
Well, I'm just, I'm unsure.
Can't wait a magic wand and change the road.
I understand that, but I don't understand what a planning board does. Don't you take into consideration what type of business is in there? Like, I'm confused as to how this all works.
We do, we do, we do site plans. That's all we do is site plans. What the business is, I can't say they can put, um, whether they can put a tire warehouse down there or a bodily recycling plant or a metal recycling plant down there. I don't have, we don't have that site. We just look at the site plans for proper road, proper drainage, proper thickness of pavement to ma- and try to make the neighbors happy. That's why they put, they're gonna put a row of arborvitae on your side of the road so as they grow, you won't see the trucks going in and out and it will cancel the noise year-round. I don't know when you have your windows closed, it's not as noisy, but in the summertime, those arborvitae's will help kill the noise of the trucks going in and out. So, I mean, they're trying. I'm not here defending them. I'm just telling you what they've proposed so far.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Please come on, state your name and-
Tim Daly, 25 Rockland Road. I am not in a butter, but I'm a few houses up. Your comment, first of all, thank you for your service. We appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you.
One of your comments, and I hope I can get an answer. I haven't really got an answer that I've been looking. It's not, maybe not the right answer, but I need an answer. I have a copy of the variance from 1969, okay? And on the variance, it was approved by obviously three men that volunteered their time and-
The zoning board? That's the zoning board.
No, I know. I understand. But my question, well, your, my question is if you handle from the road in to the site, correct?
Generally, yeah.
Generally? Okay. On the variance, it says that, and the way that they wrote it up was, and I'll read it, it says, "This situation that any or such operations will not be obnoxious or objectionable to the neighbors." My problem, I guess, is that here's the variance and it, and I'm not giving you guys a hard time. Please don't take it that way. Here's the variance. Every time I would ask a question, well, it's a variance. I understand that they have a right to the property. I get that. It's a variance. I mean, I've talked to an attorney this morning and he said, yeah, they have a right. They have a right to be there. But on this, it says objectional or obnoxious to the neighbors. We, the neighbors, feel it's obnoxious because it's 30 to 40 trucks a day that go up and down the street and they start at 7:02 in the morning and they go till six, tonight it was 1:06:15. And I'm not airing dirty laundry because I can call them anytime. But if, if, if we're talking about the variance, then how come we don't include the whole bottom part of the variance that says if the neighbors are unobjectionable or obnoxious in the neighborhood? How come we don't include that in, in a conversation?
Once again, I think that's something that has to be before the zoning board, not before us.
I, I understand that, but when I go to any other board, they say, well, it's a variance.
Well, did you-
It is a variance. It's in, it's in the variance.
Did you go before the zoning board?
Yes.
And they said it's a variance?
Yes.
And you read that to them?
Yes.
I'd be asking them for an explanation.
All I've been told is that-
And then-
It's a variance.
Let me tell you what's gonna happen. You said obnoxious and what was the other word?
Objectionable.
Objectionable.
You're gonna get into the definition of obnoxious and objectionable.
Well, that's the issue. I agree with you 100%.
Well, that's gonna be all legal stuff.
And, and what is obnoxious to me might not be obnoxious to you.
Correct.
And I perfectly understand that. But what do we do? Because it is obnoxious. We-
I-
And the only reason I'm coming here tonight is I've been to every other board and I've never, other than last time, I've never been to a planning board meeting. I had never been, and I've lived on that road for like 45 years and there's been all different kinds of trucks and traffic. This is over the, this is over the limit. Well, for the neighborhood. And she is right that, that frames do shake on the, frames shake on the wall and they start at, you know, seven, it's getting kinda iffy, but, but if it says this on here, then why, I guess my question is, why aren't we going by this whole piece of paper? Why are we just saying, well, it's a variance and a variance says you can, you can just do whatever you want?
Everything you're saying is correct. We don't disagree with you. However, you have to make that argument to the zoning board.
Maybe even the selectmen.
Go to the selectmen?
I would.
They, they have to define to you what is-
Objectionable and obnoxious.
Objectionable, obnoxious. They have to be able to give you that definition.
So if, okay.
I wish, I wish we could.
I know, and I understand, and I think that-
And I'd like to make everybody in this room happy.
I'd like to have someone come and sit in one of our driveways at 7:02 in the morning and see that it's obnoxious.
I've been doing this quite a while and I've never made everybody happy in the room.
I know. I, I, that's-
I try.
I'm not here to cause trouble. I'm just here to bring this up that, that, you know, um-
As far as the, the bouncing and the vibration, if the road is built correctly, that should eliminate a lot of that because I'm sure there's a lot of bouncing on the gravel road because it's not perfectly smooth. There may be a rut or a bump or a rock and a truck hits it. I know what it sounds like.
I know. It's not even the property road. It's more when you hear them at 7:01 coming up Rockland Road. You can hear them from, you know, can hear it from Ronnie's house. But, okay, that's all I wanted to know because no one, I, I don't know. No one sees all, try the selectmen and see what they have to offer because it is obnoxious to us. And I think that all of our opinions somehow should matter.
They do.
They do matter.
They do matter. And that's why I'm saying and trying to tell you to go to the zoning board.
Okay.
And if you get no results from them, I would go to, I'd go to the town manager in the selectmen.
I tried that.
Go to the town manager?
I didn't get that far.
Did you go to the selectmen?
No, not yet. But I will.
Absolutely. You're gonna have to get on their agenda and all that stuff.
Okay.
It's an open meeting if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yes. It's public opinion, it's public comment in the beginning.
You're gonna have to get on the agenda, how soon you have to get on the agenda before the next meeting. I don't know any of that, so.
That's fine. Okay. I just wanted to hear your opinion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I think they put a sign-up sheet right there on that desk before the meeting.
Who does?
The Select Board?
Well, that's fine.
Oh, they do? Yeah, you can go in before the meeting and talk for public comment.
Yes.
That's not a problem at all.
Yeah. And you'll find the town manager very approachable.
Okay.
Yes, she is.
Send her an email.
So can I call the town manager directly or do I have to go through?
Sure.
You can call her.
Not a problem.
Send her an email. If you look up on the town website, her email address is there, so.
All right. I just wanted to hear your opinion, that's all. Thank you all.
For, for the record, we are not trying to be dismissive of anybody. We are trying to give you the correct pathways.
Right. We understand. Just that it's been since May of last year.
Understood.
And traffic is not getting any better.
Understood.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else from the audience? Sure. Come on up and state your name and your address.
My name's Anne Powers, 43 Rockland Roads, I'm in a butter to the business. So when you talk of the arborvitae's quieting things down and that's gonna help the noise, that's not where the noise is coming from. It's coming from Rockland Road as well. So my house faces Rockland Road. The dirt road to the business comes down here and this is where the arborvitae's would be, but it's the trucks in front of my house that are coming down, making noise. And then they put the brakes on. That's right in front of my house and that's right where the accident was a week ago where they had to close the road. The truck took the whole telephone pole off and knocked it to the ground. Then till 11 or 12 at night, four and five trucks came back. I do have pictures of it. So that was an 18-wheeler, took that telephone pole out because it went past, tried to back in the driveway across the street from me and took out the telephone pole. And again, that road is walked and biked and runners. It is so busy in a comfortable street. If anybody was out there, that could have been a different situation. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody on the planning board have any questions?
No.
Go ahead.
John, I think I said it there last meeting and the one before, that I'd like to see the road up to a, have it engineered and maybe consider two lanes. They've got a, a, a lot of trucks coming in and out. There's no way that they can pass. I'm not sure the light at the beginning and end is the way to go. I would wanna see it be a road that was engineered by an engineer and whatever height he says and what's under the base of the two and a half based asphalt and the two and a half top.
Bless you.
And also, I said on several occasions, I wanted to see the whole site with oil and water separated, engineered and then asphalted. I mean, I don't, I don't know how much clearer. I don't know how anybody else feels, but that's how I feel.
So as I said recently, Todd, in this meeting, that I have not a chance to review the plans, but I did have a chance to review some of the letters back and forth. One, I don't agree with removing five inches and putting five inches of asphalt in. I don't know what's under that. There could be crap underneath there. It could be fill from years ago. It should be a foot of gravel and then the four inches or five, whatever you wanna do so you're at the same elevation you are now. It should have a proper road base to handle that type, type of traffic. Now, as far as noise and trucks coming down the hill, I don't think you're, tell me if I'm wrong, it's not so much the truck coming down, it's when the Jake Brake goes on when he's coming down the hill. We're gonna have a no Jake Brake sign. You, you could, well, going up the hill, you won't get a Jake Brake. That's, that's not a Jake Brake. Jake Brake, when you hear a trailer truck come down the hill and it starts going, that's the loud noise you hear when they're coming in, that's a Jake Brake. The other one, I don't know, maybe we can make him take a left and go out Boy Street. That's a possibility. I don't know. I, I have to, yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I would point out that this is a historical commercial use. I know it's an albatross.
I understand, Todd.
So we, we, we really shouldn't be made to go backwards with this whole thing. I mean, it's, we're entitled to use the building as a commercial use. The variance kinda talks about that and we've gotten our, we've gotten a special permit from the zoning board after a lot of discussion with certain limitations on hours of operation, terms of trucks and the like. And we satisfied them at least as to the, you know, those issues. So it feels like we're going backwards a little bit when we talk about those items. When we talk about the site plan, you know, we, Mr. Brooks's comment about making, you know, a two-lane road down there is not something that the applicant is desirous of doing for a number of different reasons.
I don't think you can. I don't think you have the width.
We, we may or may not, but we either get closer to the residences, which is the likely scenario because the other way is the wetland and the brook, which is, is likely not a solvable solution. So this, this driveway, you know, if, if this was designed day one as, as something, if we were coming in day one and it wasn't there, this would not be what we would propose. This would not be what you would accept. We have to deal with the situation that we have there, which is a historical gravel drive, which we're willing to pave, um, you know, put in certain features so that we You know, put in certain features so that we can try to satisfy, you know, land disturbance permit and the like. The comment was made about the flow across the driveway. We thought we could deal with that, but we really can't. You know, the suggestion and the request of the town engineer is that we need to let it continue to flow exactly like it's flowing now. So there's a lot of issues that we can't solve. We can't solve them all. We can make this, I guess, as good as we can, which is what we, where we think we are right now. The issue with the, you know, the desirous of the two-way traffic. These trucks, generally speaking, and of course, I'm sure someone's gonna tell me that it happens once, that there were two trucks passing, but generally speaking, they're going out at one point in the day and they're coming in at another point in the day, generally speaking. So for the most part, the usage is kinda one way. It does happen that, sure, somebody might be coming in and out, it's not all the time. And there's eighteen feet of width for this, for this driveway. We don't wanna make this a super road, we don't wanna make it two lane, we don't think we can. So I guess we have to get to the point where we can all accept, or not, but we're willing to accept the road being basically reconstructed in its current, in its current configuration with the, with the changes that we've talked about.
Well, say we had the room and we didn't have a problem lighting the road. That would only increase the number of trucks per hour.
It would only.
Increase the number of trucks per hour. Because you could have people, his, his business would be booming, booming, booming because he'd be sending out and bringing them in at the same time, we can't do that. So now you send them out in the morning.
It's, it's operationally there.
They take it to where they gotta go and they pick up all the other stuff, they bring it back to crush it and they take it out the next day or the day after, correct? Is that the way it works?
Kevin Kelly, who's the, who's the operating manager, couldn't be here tonight, but he would tell you that this is, this is the operation at really kinda max volume. This is it, they have, they have a routine, they operated out of the city of Worcester for, for a number of years. This isn't a new territory for them, they know what they have coming in and coming out. It doesn't vary tremendously, it's pretty consistent. Their, where they pick up from, where they get, where these things are coming from, where the cans and bottles are coming from, it doesn't vary significantly. So even putting a wider road in, it wouldn't double the volume of trucks.
No, I'm saying he could, he could increase his business if you wanted to because he, he could do that.
Could, but that's not, that's not the goal. The goal is to service the business that, that's, that's there.
I understand.
Existing. With a situation that's less than ideal in a lot of ways. But, you know, again, we've got the right to be there with the, with the ZBA approvals. We're trying to do the best we can with the existing current conditions. We, we did, we did talk about the, the light issue.
Yep.
And, you know, if the fire department thinks it's a good idea, you know, we can, we can, we can deal with that. I don't know that it's really necessary, I don't think we, we feel as a project team it's really necessary for operational purposes and it's really more of an operational issue. So the other issues, I mean, the driveway, the, the Abervite we put in there, we haven't talked about paving the entire site. I know, I know that was mentioned at one point by, by Mr. Brooks. That wasn't something that, that we had proposed. And, and the existing drainage, I don't know if you, if we've, I don't know what the, okay. They have oil-water separators in them?
We're not gonna have, well, I'm not gonna be in favor of anything that's gonna have that many trucks without oil and water separators in it and some type of approved drainage.
Sorry, can you say that last, can you say that last part? Can you say that last part again?
I'm not gonna be in favor of anything that doesn't have options. Oil and water separators and approved, I'm gonna have to go on that. And, you know, a design, a simple, like, and where is it going and then how would they have to have a maintenance.
You have the old copy, I want the old copy, I want, I'll say some of the.
We've got oil and water separators on everything, even smaller business.
I mean, I, we can, we can talk about it, but I don't think the project team has, has gone down the path of considering paving all of this, nor is it designed that way right now.
And if the road, I mean, you probably get away with doing some type of an engineered upgrade to the road. As Joan says, wanna see a foot of all of asphalt.
Gravel.
Then the asphalt, something that some engineer said would work or allow some flow back and forth, okay? And if that doesn't work for you, then maybe you just don't go to the site. Not every single site in town is something that can work. As if it was coming, if it was coming fresh to us now, we'd be working at it where you wanted to try to get a road to a swamp.
No, I, I understand. And, and look, I think, I go back to.
It's the way we see it.
Sure, and, but I go back to the, I go back to what I started to say before. This isn't a perfect situation for us either, for the, for the, for the operator, the applicant in this case. But this is a historical, commercial slash industrial use with, that was allowed with a gravel driveway for a long time. We're making it better. We're doing, we're, we're doing a lot here to try to, to try to make this better. We went to zoning board, you know, as, as, at the request of the building inspector, decided not to fight about whether we needed to go there or not, because frankly, I don't think we needed to go there at all. That triggered the need to then come to you and then we're going through this process with all the requests to make upgrades to this site, which, you know, if you, if you ask me, we shouldn't be here either. But we are, so we're trying to make it work. It does feel like we're, it does feel like we're, we're moving the goalposts a little bit though in terms of trying to get to the end of, of the project. I, I don't know if everybody agrees that we should be required to pave all of this, the area up top.
Any new business that comes in, almost anything.
This isn't a new business, so.
I know it's a business, that, that, it's that size and with that amount of traffic and everything there, we would, would absolutely have to be asphalted.
I, I understand.
It's not like they're picking on you and saying, oh, we want you to asphalt it and stuff like that, you know? And you do amongst everything, it, it is, you have the variance, whatever that ends up being legally required. But there are several neighbors in the area that remain concerned to us too, that we, they're gonna be here all the time, they live there.
Sure, but whether we pave the parking area or not, it's not really a neighbor issue, that's a.
Todd.
But that's a planning board issue, so it is for me.
In theory, Todd, if you were to withdraw this application, the owner could still operate the business as is right now by maintaining the gravel road.
I don't know if that's true because we did go through the ZBA process and because of your bylaw, if you get a, if you get a variance or a special permit, you're then required to go through site plan. You know, we, we could have probably asked for a waiver from site plan approval, but we didn't. Because we weren't, you know, this not, this is, this site was there, driveway was there, parking area was there. You know, most of what is, you know, this is a historical site, right? So it's a question of, did we, did we trigger, is it a material change and things like that? We just said, you know what, we'll, we'll go to planning board. We'll go. And we'll do the things that we, we think we need to do.
So my question was, had you decided not to pave at all, just maintain as it was when you bought the property and not gone to the ZBA, you could have continued operating your business as is without upgrading the, the road?
We think so, but the, you know, the building inspector did agree and then disagree and then agree and then disagree again. So then we said, we'll just go through the process.
Anyone else from the audience?
So, so we, we, I don't, I don't wanna talk about the same stuff all over again, please.
I don't mind it.
So, I'm sorry, but we've been doing this for a while, I think we've probably heard what we need to hear. But I'd like to know from, from the board, you know, we're gonna get you, the, the plans that you, you have are, you know, the most, most recent. But I guess as a project team, we'll, we'll discuss the, the paving, the oil-water separators, those issues. I don't think we were clear about the twelve inch of gravel base, you know?
The concept was to reuse the gravel that was there.
If it's gravel, it has to meet a certain sieve analysis.
Understood. So the, the concept was to remove the subbase to the five inches. Stockpile the gravel that's there, check it, put in, remove the subbase, reinstall the gravel and then pave. So the elevations would remain. So when we're in the point of excavating the existing gravel, we can certainly determine its quality and sieve analysis and then in addition to that supplement to get to the, the foot that you're requesting. So that can all happen at the same time. But in the meantime, we can go out there now and determine what the thickness is and, you know, make, do some test, testing to see what's there presently, thickness wise and sieve wise.
Do you have that testing by the next meeting?
If you did some. Yeah, yeah, I'm sure we can have some, some work done in the next two or three weeks, I'm not sure when the next meeting is, but yeah.
Uh, the next meeting is August twelfth, so about a month.
Yeah, so I would think we can have that information in, in time. But Todd's point, you know, we would like to get all the comments at once and, and, you know, approach this all in a, you know, a holistic manner as opposed to piecemeal. But if that's the extent of the comments, absolutely by next month. But I'm assuming there's gonna be additional input from fire and, and engineering as well.
Probably. Yes, Ross, yeah, I know. Give me a sec, let Todd finish and I'll let him come up.
I think our charge then is to evaluate that gravel base, but, but I guess either way, the condition is it's gotta be twelve inches of suitable gravel base, right? If we find we have six inches of suitable gravel base.
Whatever the town stands for, sieve analysis, Todd, with.
So, so we can address that. Again, I don't know, and this happens all the time, but the fire department had a chance to comment, they didn't. We can try to approach them, I don't know if that's the, the mechanism you wanna go through. They, they often, if they're satisfied, they don't send anything to you, they don't say, we're happy with this, you know? They, they just say nothing. When they have a problem, they pipe in. So I'm assuming they don't have a problem. We're happy to go talk to them if that's something that you would like us to try to do. I can't guarantee that they're gonna give you a letter. And maybe, maybe Adam has some input on how we might better approach that. But we certainly don't wanna ignore that issue, we're not trying to ignore fire department if they have a concern. So I guess we have to deal with that. And, you know, I think as a, as a project team, we're hearing at least from Mr. Brooks, that he'd like to see this all paved with oil-water separators. And I assume you mean sort of the up, the up piece, the, the, that, that upward parking lot travel area. Were there any other issues, I think? Okay. So I think we know what, what we need to do. So we would, and we certainly need four weeks or so in September, what did you say, October?
There's not a problem continuing, Todd.
So we'll, we'll do that. And we're trying to continue to work through any of the land disturbance permit issues with the town engineer. So we'll keep, we'll have to keep her informed of these changes that we may make. And we'll be at Concom tomorrow night. Probably won't be, I mean, we're gonna show them the new plans, but besides the excavating depth, I don't think anything's really all that different. So I don't know that we'll close out of that meeting tomorrow night. We might, if, if they're okay.
So would you prefer to continue to the August meeting or the September meeting?
I'd love to say August, I guess I'm just not a hundred percent sure that we'll be done with all that.
You can always continue to September if you need to.
And I know that's frustrating for people, but otherwise.
That's what it is, I mean, people only work so fast.
So the, the other issue I guess is the road, road depth. We really have a lot of problems going wider for, for a number of different reasons. So if that isn't tragic, and I, I know I gave my explanation that the trucks are mostly kind of in or out and they're not really in and out at the same time, that's not the predominant, you know, travel pattern. Do we really have an issue with the eighteen feet and the essentially, it's essentially one way at that point? The, we did discuss the, the green light, red light concept. We could, we could institute something like that if that's a, an agreeable fix.
I think it'll be, I think it'll be done with solar panels.
Say that again?
It could be done with solar panels.
Certainly wanna see.
The power, you mean?
Yeah.
To get the, yeah.
I certainly wanna see that, but I'm amenable to the eighteen feet.
So I only have one more question for the gentleman in the back, speak again, Todd. My, my question is, why wasn't it considered to pave the entire parking lot during this total improvement?
Partly the expense.
Cost.
Yeah. There's been a lot of, the building was not in good shape. It's, it needs work, it needs more work.
What, the building or the lot?
The, the whole thing, really. You know, it, it was not well maintained, the prior owner did not do a good job with this, you know, with this site.
My only suggestion is if, if you decide to pave the whole lot, which if I had my druthers, I'd have you do, but it makes it easier for snow plowing, it makes for less runoff. It's easy to control the drainage, you can set it to catch basing center, recharge system, oil-water separator, whatever you gotta do, it just makes it easier.
Yeah.
Faster.
Just to clarify, there is a proposed stormwater management system in place under this design and it, it considers the, the runoff from the entire site. There are catch basins, there is curbing, it's just, it's just, proposed to maintain the gravel as opposed to pavement, but.
So let me ask you this, if you have a gravel parking lot and it goes through a catch basin, is there a silt sack in that catch basin?
There is a catch basin with a sump, which would give required fire maintenance.
Right, but in a gully washer, the sump really doesn't do much. The sump works if the water comes in and it fills the sump. Sump goes down the drain line wherever it's gotta go, the rest settles out in the bottom of the sump. In a gully washer, it all runs down the line because it stays churned up. So what I'm asking is if, if you don't put a silt sack or some other siltation preventative in that system, the system's eventually gonna fill up. And I know just by experience and seeing what people do, and even the towns, don't clean the catch basins regularly. And then you're gonna have a flood. Because it won't have any place to go, it's gonna come right out of the catch basin. You know what I mean?
I, I understand your point, the catch basin is connected to an underground stormwater detention system. But to your point, yes, the catch basin would require more frequent maintenance if it were gravel as opposed to if it were paved.
So with the rest of the system, a lot more maintenance. But if you paved it, you wouldn't need to do that as often.
Agreed.
That's block gravel, what I thought was grindings.
It, it's gravel with asphalt grindings, yes, correct.
So, same thing. Uh, the gentleman in the back had one more comment. You all set, Todd?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's okay.
I promise.
No problem.
The site might have been historical and I don't disagree that it's been there for a long time, but the road never went out that way. And forty-seven Rockland Road does not exist. There's no entrance to forty-seven Rockland Road, onto Rockland Road, it's only forty-nine. So I don't know how that all of a sudden became historical, I know, I, I'm not asking you.
Way before my time in town.
Yeah, mine, probably mine too, but it used to go up Main, I think I explained that the last minute, it went up Main Street. And then they complained, so that was okay, so we just, so we just did it.
They filled in the swamp.
Thing, right.
We could go that way.
But it, but the site has changed. The site is nowhere near anything like what it used to be. There used to be maybe ten trucks, now there's thirty to forty. So it has, it has changed according, go ahead.
The usage has.
Yes, you're right.
The usage has changed, the traffic has increased. But the actual site for what it does is pretty much the same, whether it's tire warehouse, bringing tires in and out. This is just more traffic going and out with taking out the crushed bottles and bringing in the glass to be, you know.
And I did check with the post office and that site was closed for more than three years.
Okay.
So, just a point of interest. I don't know if that has anything to do with, and I don't know what your decisions are gonna be, I have no idea. As I say, this is only a second meeting, so we'll see what happens, but, but, but it has changed and I will take your suggestion and go to the selectmen.
But the only thing I can come up with, I may not be right, but.
Right, I appreciate that.
Trying to give you an avenue to go to get some satisfaction, it's not, it's not in our purview.
Because Rockland Road is taking a beating, that's for sure.
Have you driven around the town? There's a lot of roads that take a beating.
I'm not gonna ask.
They need upgrading.
All right, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Also with the last meeting, there was some talk about the drainage inside the building from fluids that were in the bottles and cans and how that was handled when they left the building. So did it drain into the ground? Were there some, were there some drainage holes in the building itself to handle that? No one answered that question.
I don't know what the plumbing plan is inside the building, that's the building and plumbing inspector's department, not ours. But I'm sure they can answer the question. I would, I would assume it goes to the sewer.
There are no floor drains in the building, is my understanding. And according to Kevin, who's the, you know, the CFO and the operator, you know, regionally, says these things, I mean, people talk about, I mean, it's, it's, I think there's the vision that there's two liter bottles full of Coca-Cola that spill on the floor. But he says that first of all, most of the machines that take these cans and bottles, you know, they're kinda now single, you put a can in, it drops down into thing, they won't take it if there's fluid in there. They can sense it, I don't know how, but that he tells me, they won't take it if it has a certain amount of fluid in it. He says by the time they get to him, there's nothing, there's no fluid. They have less than a couple spittles on the floor to deal with during the course of the day and they just mop it up when needed and it's not even frequent. So it's not, there's no, there's no slip hazards in the building, there's no mass quantities of, of, of fluid floating around.
Is that building sewn by town sewer? I don't know.
Yep.
Yes, okay, answer my question, so ahead.
So just in talking with Michael on the, on the turnaround time, we, we think we probably won't be ready for the August meeting. So rather than set that expectation, if it's okay, we'd rather just move to the September meeting? I don't know, I don't know what the schedule is.
September ninth.
Yeah, September ninth, I believe it is, Todd.
Yeah.
Would you like to continue to?
We would like to continue to September.
Chair, I'd like to move the, uh, we continue the hearing into the September ninth meeting.
We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor? John, Lynn, Ron?
Aye.
They saw, is an aye, it's a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
I just ask, cause I'm still standing here, do you sign that Mylar for Arlington Street tonight?
Yeah.
I, I, I'll hang around and grab it then.
Okay, perfect.
Make some business, Todd.
Uh, next on the agenda, we'll take care of it after. Next on the agenda is CMRPC two delegates that would like to be part of that, Todd, I mean.
So through the chair, this is the annual election of delegates to CMRPC. Planning board gets to choose too whether they're planning board members or a resident that's interested. So if there are board members that would like to be members, John?
Mr. Chair, I tried talking through the computer to you last time when you were meeting and I wasn't here. Through the. through the YouTube to tell you that I would accept when, when this issue came up.
We don't do the online thing anymore, that's why.
No, I know, I know. I was just saying, I was, I was talking to my phone, but, uh, I'd be happy to do it.
Okay. Jason, you still?
Yeah, I'll carry on for another year.
We're all set. We're all set. Have a motion for these two delegates to become part of the CMRPC.
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second? John?
Aye.
All those in favor? John?
Aye.
Glenn, aye.
Aye.
Ron, aye. Jason, aye. Myself, John Regan is an aye, that's a vote. Um, we've already signed the decisions. And, uh, next on the agenda is, um, the 6-8 meetings have been taken off the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the 6-24, 2025 meeting minutes as amended?
I move to approve the.
Minutes for 6-24, 25 as amended?
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? John?
I, I wasn't here. Can I still vote on it?
I know you won't. Glenn?
Aye.
Ron? Jason? Myself, John Regan is an aye. Nothing unforeseen by me. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All those in favor? John?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
Jason, aye. Myself, John Regan, aye. Meeting is now adjourned.